Well, good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock on March fourth, two thousand and twenty five, and I'm gonna call this regular city council meeting to order. Looks like Councilmember Dunning is excused this evening, but all other council is present. If you're able, can you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, we'd like to acknowledge that we, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Mezzin Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. With that, can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda and consent agenda?
I would like to approve the agenda.
Does someone have a... Charger? Well, no. Sorry, everyone.
Could the city attorney take a look at their microphone?
Check, check, check. Oh, there.
That's better.
Better.
Okay. It's... Did I get a motion in a second?
Yep.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to approve tonight's agenda and consent agendas signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. We have an approved agenda and consent agenda. And first up on our approved agenda is first, it's our Public Service Award for James Murray, who's here.
Come up. So I pointed James back to the Lacey Library Board way back in two thousand and seventeen. I don't know how it's been that long, but it has been. And the City of Lacey has a very unique relationship with our Lacey Timberland Library. We... The City of Lacey actually owns the building, and so we have an advisory body that will officially look at the needs and any requests that come through for the Lacey Library and make a recommendation that goes through our planning process. And they've done a lot of amazing things over... Been over to Lacey Timberland Library lately. It is absolutely truly an asset we have in our community. And just, you know, since James has been on the board, we had a big interior remodel in two thousand and twenty. We had the addition of a family bathroom in the lobby, addition to of a check-in room and new lockers. But it's more than just sort of this informal, this formal relationship that we have. The Lacey Board really is sort of this really cool connection that we have to an amazing asset. And you're over there, and you're sort of the eyes and the ears. And yeah, you have this formal role, but then you're also always big supporters of the Lacey Timberland Library. And that really makes a difference in your community. If you, you know, the library is, again, such a community asset. And to have this really unbelievable relationship that we have, supporting an organization in return that supports our entire community, we're very proud of it in Lacey. And we just want to thank you, James, for all of your time and effort you've given to the City of Lacey. So we have this distinguished Public Service Award for your time on the Library Board from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-five. So on behalf of the City Council and the City of Lacey, thank you for all you've done for our community.
Oh.
So thank you. Want to say a few words?
We're just looking forward to the board approving the adding of the two small little rooms in the library for the individuals.
Thank you.
You get it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So next up, we have actually two more public service awards, one for Camber Good and the other for Wendy Goodwin. And Jen, can come up and...
Good evening, and thank you for being here. I'm Jen Burbidge, Director of Parks, Culture and Recreation for the city. I don't see Camber here, but I did want to say a couple of words about her and let her know we just appreciate her service on the Parks Culture and Recreation Board. She joined the board in two thousand and twenty-one, serving as vice chair for two years, from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four. And what I really appreciated about working with Camber is that she champions affordable and accessible parks and programs. And that is, you know, super, super important for our park system and for our community. I also appreciate her help in providing the perspective as a user of the Lacey Park System by herself and her family. She was always, you know, giving feedback based on what her inner kiddos were out doing. So just Camber, when you watch this, we just want to make sure you know how much we appreciate your contributions to Lacey Parks. And also thank you for all the additional volunteer work that you do out in the community to benefit people, you know, outside of your service with the City of Lacey. So, Camber Good. And it sounds like the city clerk's office will make sure that she gets the award.
Next one's for Wendy.
Yeah, Wendy Goodwin is here. So do you want to come on up? I'm gonna talk first, but then I'll give you the microphone.
I want you to talk first.
Sounds good. Wendy joined the Parks Culture and Recreation Board in two thousand and twenty-one. In two thousand and twenty-three, she was elected as chair and served for two years in that role. And while on the Parks Board, she also served in a couple of other roles, extra roles, the outreach team, and that was a group of community members put together by a consultant that had helped us to update our Parks Culture and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. This was a very heavy lift for our department and for the Parks Board. And Wendy enthusiastically joined the outreach team and attended events to make sure that we received the important community input about our Parks Culture and Recreation System. She then served on another group, the Parks Improvement Funding Work Group, which the council put together last year, and she provided valuable insights and background information for that group as well. But what I need to say is that she doesn't really need to be on an official committee or an official work group to be out there in the community and checking on our parks, our facilities, our programs, providing, you know, cheer and support for our staff. She's just such an engaged Parks Board member and community member. We just super appreciate her energy and just the care that she has for people in the community. And I see a couple of head nods of people that also probably know Wendy very well. So she just raises her hand to volunteer in the community, and it's just absolutely incredible. But you'll be greatly missed. At this moment, I just can't imagine the Parks Board without you, honestly. But we know it's not goodbye. We know that we're gonna see her still out in the parks and also serving on a new board that's a passion of hers as well. So we're super excited for her next adventure. But mostly, we'll just miss our, you know, more frequent interaction. So, anyway, thank you.
So again, we have a Public Service Award for your time. So on behalf of the City Council and City of Lacey, and really everyone who's got to enjoy the benefit of working with you. And, you know, the Lacey Parks is really such a jewel of our community, and it's sort of all hands on deck to make that happen. We have great staff. We have supportive council. But it's really, it starts with the Parks Board, and they're the ones doing so much work, you know, especially when you as the chair with all the outreach that has happened. Yeah, I can't imagine what it's gonna be like without you on the Parks Board either. So really, on behalf of council, we have the city, behalf of everyone in our community, thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate all you've done.
I have a few words, and if you know me, that's not uncommon. Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor Miller, City Council members of the city, thank you for this Public Service Award. It has and will continue to be an honor to serve the City of Lacey. Counsel, I'd like to recognize the organizations that the individuals in attendance this evening are representing: the Timberland Regional Library, Thurston County Food Bank, Thurston County Food Project, the Olympia Free Clinic, Seroptimus of Olympia, the Providence Regional Cancer System, the Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation Commission, and my family and friends. Thank you all for being here tonight. I appreciate you so much. These organizations and friends are my guide when facing challenging issues and or times when I need support. They rise to the call of community voices and take care of each other and their neighbors. By having personally worked with many of them on various community projects, their lasting friendships and teamwork mean so much to me. I want to thank them for being here tonight, and I share this Public Service Award with them. The coming years are going to be challenging for many in our community. The attendees here tonight represent the best of Thurston County's compassion, empathy, and hard work. I know there are more organizations out there which need community partnerships as well. My ask of counsel would be that when we continue to best serve all our community members' needs, when those organizations come to you, give thoughtful consideration to their concerns. With this award, I do not say goodbye. I say I will see you soon. Volunteering and service to the public is never complete. It is a calling to do our best work in times of need and challenges. It's the compassionate thing to do. It's the Lacey thing to do. Thank you.
So next up on our agenda is proclamations. And we'll get started with Councilmember Vasquez.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas, in times of crisis, communities come together to care for one another. American Red Cross volunteers and donors exemplify this humanitarian spirit. And whereas, in eighteen eighty-one, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her dedication of helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. And...
Whereas today, more than one hundred and forty years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. And...
Whereas in Lacey, the contributions of the local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours. Whether it provides emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like home fires. And...
Whereas donating essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease. And...
Whereas the Red Cross partners with the Lacey Veteran Services Hub and other veteran organizations to sponsor the Thurston County Veterans Resource organizations to sponsor the Thurston County Veterans Resource Fair, which provides vital resources to veterans as well as active-duty military throughout Thurston County. And whereas their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. And...
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim March 2025 as American Red Cross Month in the City of Lacey. I encourage all community members to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Can I say a few words?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I've never seen such good teamwork in all my life. I've done a lot of these proclamations, never had a group like that do it, so hats off to all of you. And wow, can I clear a room or what? Now, actually, I'm very, very humbled and honored to be here tonight to accept this proclamation. You know, our founder, Clara Barton, I'm sure would be equally humbled and quite frankly shocked to see how the Red Cross has grown over the years. 140 years ago, she started this organization, and today, we're not only throughout the United States, but worldwide, under different banner. So many things have happened since then. For instance, today, we respond to disasters more than ever before. I'm sure you see us on TV every night wearing our red jackets. We get deployed frequently to these disasters, but we do about 65,000 disasters every year now. That equates to one every eight minutes. So, that's pretty amazing in itself. But some other things people probably don't realize, most of this is done by volunteers. The Red Cross is basically made up of volunteers. Ninety percent of us are volunteers. I'm a volunteer. So, that's an amazing statistic in itself. Another thing that we, you may not be aware of, but we're very involved in blood. In fact, we, we supply 40% of all the blood across the United States, which means we need to collect 4.5 million donations each and every year. So, that's extremely important because, as you just read, cancer patients, accident patients, all need blood, and every pint saves three lives. So, that's extraordinarily important. And finally, I don't know how many veterans we have here today, but we have our service to the Armed Forces where we reunite families on a regular basis and provide some 500,000 services every year to our service members. So, to say I'm proud to wear the red is an understatement. So, thank you so much for this honor. I truly appreciate it and look forward to everyone commemorating the Red Cross during the month of March. Thanks so much, everybody. Would you do me the honor of a picture with you?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I'm glad we got to celebrate for this month for the American Red Cross Month, but it's really, every month is American Red Cross Month because they do so much in our communities. And it's always there when you, when you're having a disaster and you're not sure what to turn, and all of a sudden, the Red Cross shows up and gives you help. It's just, it's a time in people's life where they need some sort of hope, and you're providing that. So, really, on behalf of the city, yes, this month, we're saying it's Red Cross Month, but it's really every month, and especially going forward too, when we're seeing the disasters in our communities are happening more and more often, we're seeing Red Cross more and more often. So, it's not only the work that you do with that, but I just wanted to thank the Red Cross personally. You know, when I had an uncle pass away and a cousin who was, who had just been deployed, you know, we counted on the Red Cross to, you know, find my cousin in that circumstance. And it was, you know, one of the hardest times in someone's life, and we were just very thankful. We wouldn't know, we wouldn't know what to do without the Red Cross in that circumstance. So, really, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all you do. Okay, next up, it's public comments, and we do have one person who signed up, it's Christina, so you can come and introduce yourself. Please come introduce yourself and keep your comments to the three minutes.
Yes, it will not take three minutes. I'm the new Lacey Timberland Regional Manager, so over Lacey, Timberland, and Hawks Prairie. And I wanted to introduce myself to the council and the community that just left, but that's okay. And I moved here from Little Rock, Arkansas about a month ago, and so I've had a wonderful welcome. I've enjoyed the library thus far. It's been great. So, hello, nice to meet you all.
Well, and thank you for y'all, for all you do, obviously. We have an outstanding relationship with the Lacey Library, and we really appreciate it, and we know you're going to do a good job. And so, let's love to hear more when stuff comes out with the library. Come over and give us some reports out. We'd love to hear it.
Absolutely. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you. Okay, let's go into our next agenda item, and it's under ordinances. The first ordinance is 1673, the disposition of surplus real property for affordable housing. Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. So, yeah, as the mayor indicated, this ordinance is related to disposition of surplus property for affordable housing. Now, state law authorizes cities and other state agencies to transfer lease, dispose, or otherwise surplus public, public property for affordable housing. And state law provides cities broad discretion in doing so to include up to a no-cost transfer. However, there are a few requirements that state law requires, one of which is that any instrument transferring the property must contain a covenant or some sort of restriction requiring that the property be used for affordable housing permanently. A second requirement is that the legislative authority, in this case, Lacey City Council, must have rules in place governing the disposition of the property. And here's where there's a gap with, with the Lacey Municipal Code as it stands, is this council has not previously adopted rules such that it can take advantage of this disposition. So, the proposed ordinance, 1673, kind of fills that gap. It authorizes the council or the city to dispose of surplus property. It requires that any disposition be pursuant to a resolution. So, before the council, before the city would dispose of any property, this, this council would take final action pursuant to resolution. The resolution would identify the property. It would describe the circumstances under which the, the city obtained the property, how the property's been used, where the funds from the property, if any, would be deposited. And it, there's a few additional requirements. So, the staff is recommending that the council approve ordinance number 1673 to adopt New Chapter 2.74 to the Lacey Municipal Code. And of course, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I would move to approve ordinance number 1673 to adopt New Chapter 2.74 of the Lacey Municipal Code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
So, affordable is a broad sweeping term. Do we, do we drill down on that? Are we talking about AMI or...?
There's a, there's a definition in state law that we'd be following, and I don't have that committed in memory.
Okay.
But yeah, it's, there's definitely a definition that we would be looking towards.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody else has that on point.
And, yeah, that, I guess, a good question that goes along with that. How, how do we verify it's continuing to be affordable in the out years? And it looks like you're...
So, I'll take the second response to that. And one of the requirements of the disposition, again, is that there be a covenant, there be a deed restriction. So, the city would perhaps grant that property to, you know, some entity, and the deed itself would restrict its use to affordable housing. And then there would be some sort of remedy in the event that it was not utilized for such a purpose, likely a reversion to the city. But that could be, that could take any number of formats.
And like Dave, I would have to read the exact words in Washington state law, but in general, it speaks to no more than 30% of your income can be spent on either ownership or rental.
Okay, so it's a little bit different.
Yeah.
Wait, there's several different, yeah, affordable, what, what one person thinks is affordable might be a little bit different than what the other person thinks is affordable. So, but I'm sure we can leave that up. Is there any other, any other discussion?
I'd just like to make a quick statement. I, I think this is really important. I mean, our council has set affordable housing as our number-one goal, trying to create a situation where people can afford to live in the community where they work. And I think this will help be another tool for us to do that. So, I will be enthusiastically voting yes for it.
I, I agree. You know, I think this is one of the, the more difficult things that we, as a council, has been trying to find out a solution. If there's an easy answer, we've come up by it now, but it really is sort of, what are the, all the tools in the toolbox, and, and can we deploy them and try to make a difference? Because at the end of the day, it is really hard when sometimes it doesn't pencil out to have affordable housing in your community. And so, in the circumstances where we have property or that's not going to use, it's not going to public use, and we can convert that over into affordable housing, then obviously, it makes all the sense in the world for us to do that. And obviously, we need rules in place, and that's what this ordinance is setting up. And so, we're looking forward to this, and hopefully, there's other opportunities. I know we do have some other properties scattered throughout the city of Lacey as well that we've sort of looked at over, over the years. And I, I think we need to continue to, to look at those properties in any possible situation where we can partner and bring some more affordable housing. Because it's, we're, you know, this is a very needed ordinance, and I know there's a project out there that we're, that we need to get, you know, some rules in place to further move forward, but this shouldn't be the end of it, right? We need to be looking at all the other different properties and seeing what else we can, what we can do for our community. So, is there any other discussion?
I, I, I think we've, over the years, we, we, we continue to find ways to, to help further this along. We did the multifamily tax exemption. We've, we've moved permit fees to later in the process, surplusing properties, partnering with other jurisdictions to, to secure properties, and partnering with other entities to, to build the affordable housing for us. I, I, I know there's probably going to be something that we can do next, and I'm looking forward to it, but I'm glad that we're doing this now.
Anyone else? Okay, then it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 1673 to adopt a new Chapter 2.74 of the Lacey Municipal Code. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. And we'll go on to our second ordinance, which is 1674, the Revised Lot Discharge Industrial Pretreatment Regulations. And that looks like a Peter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. Before you tonight, we have ordinance 1674, which will adopt the recently revised Lot Discharge and Industrial Pretreatment Regulations. For the sake of any councilmembers who aren't that familiar with LOT, and also for our citizens at home, I'm going to take a few minutes and just kind of put context on this before asking you if you'd like to make a motion to approve this. First off, what is LOT? So, LOT is the Lacey Olympia Tumwater Thurston County Clean Water Alliance. That's a mouthful. That's why we call it LOT. And what it does is it treats wastewater from North Thurston County, the Tumwater, Olympia, Lacey, urban growth areas. It treats that wastewater and discharges it under an NPDS permit, which is issued by the Department of Ecology. So, that's what they do. So, how do they get the wastewater? Well, it goes through the various jurisdictions' collection systems and goes to LOT where it gets treated and then appropriately discharged. So, it's kind of a cooperative thing. So, what we say is that LOT doesn't have customers, LOT has partners. So, Lacey is one of those partners. We have the customers, and the vast majority of our customers are residential customers. But there are some business customers, and there are a couple industrial customers who discharge into our collection system. And so, LOT is doing the treatments. They collect a fee for that. Every month, all the customers pay a fee to us, which we pass along to them. And then LOT's spending that money on all that treatment works. What if somebody, one of these businesses or industrial customers, has wastewater that is very atypical from municipal household wastewater, right? What if it has high pH or low pH, it has fat soils and grease, which we affectionately call fog? It could have metals, it could have surfactants, foaming agents, it could have combustible liquids, it could have pesticides, who knows what it's got? Would it be appropriate for everybody who pays for LOT to pay for LOT to do the additional treatment to clean that up? Probably not. Probably everyone would say, no, you made the mess, you cleaned it up first. There's also the issue of putting that stuff into the collection system will harm the collection system, and will put our workers at risk. So, it has to be treated before, pre-treated, before it goes into the collection system. So, what LOT does is they, for us, part of the money that our ratepayers are giving to them, what they do is they'll do a survey on a customer as they come online and say, well, what's your waste like? They'll characterize the waste. And then they'll decide if some kind of a treatment step has to happen before it can be discharged into the system. And if so, then that's what they have to do. And then periodically, LOT will do inspections to see if things are going on. Or if our workers in the wastewater utility find problems, they'll go upstream and try to figure it out. If they can't, they'll say, LOT, we got something going on here. LOT will go out and do it. So, LOT does an awful lot of work for us with the money they collect. However, when somebody needs to be enforced on, somebody's not doing their pretreatment, or they never raise their hand and said, hey, we got issues. So, when that happens, they're Lacey's customer. They're not LOT's customer. LOT has partners. So, Lacey has to go and do the enforcement work. Fortunately, LOT does almost all that for us. They'll do the investigation, they'll try to bring the person into compliance easily, simply, diplomatically. If not, then the notice of violation goes out. When that happens, Lacey has to issue the notice of violation because they're our customer. At any rate, what has happened recently is that the Department of Ecology is reissuing the permit, NPDS permit for LOT. So, LOT then needs to be in compliance with that. So, they use that as an opportunity to kind of tune up or modify the industrial pretreatment regulations. They also use it as an opportunity to improve the readability and clarity of the regulation. So, they did a rewrite on it. Back in February, the LOT Board approved that. So, now, I thought it was 30 days at first, that's what we were told, but it's a little bit more time than that. Doesn't matter. We need to adopt that regulation into Lacey Municipal Code so that when we need to enforce, we're all on the same page, we're all using the same regulation. So, that's what this ordinance does. One thing I wanted to point out in the ordinance is there's one little change to it from all the previous years, and that is, it says, "That certain document had a LOT Discharge Industrial Pretreatment Regulations as revised in 2025, and as the same may be hereafter amended, revised, or modified, is hereby adopted as the official rules and regulations of the City of Lacey setting forth industrial pretreatment requirements and regulations of discharges into the city's wastewater system." So, what this will do, if you adopt it tonight, is it won't have to be adopted ever again. The next time LOT makes a change, it's automatically what we're going to do. It's automatically codified in the LMC. Just wanted to be aware of that change that we've done. Any questions?
Can I get a motion?
Can I get a motion?
I would move to approve ordinance 1674 adopting recently revised lot discharge and industrial treatment regulations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? No? Obviously, this is pretty straightforward. I mean, is there, I can't imagine, I mean, I'm like that we're going to pass this and not to come back and discuss it because it makes sense to be on the same page. What, what if for some reason the city of Lacey refused to pass this ordinance? I mean, do we even, is this one of those ordinances like we really have no choice but to?
Well, we could like create our own wastewater treatment facility and get our own permit and do it our own way.
Which doesn't make any sense. This is one of those things where...
But, I mean, there are always options, right? They're not good ones, but there's always options.
Well, Mr. Mayor, that's why we've added that language.
That's what it makes...
Because the ILA mandates the city follow it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Doesn't make any sense to ever, yeah, okay.
Not the only one that we vote on that makes no sense for us to be voting on.
That's very true. Is there any other discussion?
We affirm our commitment to partnering with lot.
Yes, yeah.
I do like the fact that the individual resident homeowner, renter, whatever, is not paying foot in the bill for, you know, companies with their extra waste or their special waste, if you will.
Anything else? Then it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 1674, the Revised Lot Discharge Industrial Pretreatment Regulations. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. And before Peter leaves, Peter's been with the city of Lacey for a long time, I think going like over 20 years, 24 years? And he's going to be retiring at the end of this month. And Peter's one of those people, like, I can't imagine what the city of Lacey is going to be like without you and our wire department. It's like, maybe I've just been here for too long, but I just can't imagine with all the things that you've done and all the knowledge that you have when it comes to wastewater, water, our systems, it's pretty unmatched. And so I don't know if we'll have another opportunity to thank you for all of your years you've given to this community. But, and we've gone through a lot of, lot of things over the years, and I've always appreciated all the information that you've brought to this council and your level headedness in getting the, through some big, big things that we've discussed when it comes to our, our system and looking at our rates and everything else. So I know, I'm sure the city manager wants to say a few words, but I just want to say on, you know, behalf of myself and all the years that you've helped advise myself and this council, thank you so much for all you've done for the city of Lacey.
Thank you.
Could I say a quick word too? Peter, I'm going to miss you terribly. And as Andy said, you are an institution, and we're going to miss your expertise here. But I also wanted to say, you know, I'm a retired staff member for the State Office of Drinking Water, and you enjoy quite a fine reputation statewide. So I just want to reflect that.
Absolutely.
I just want to share too, is March 28th, which I think is Peter's last day, will have a retirement ceremony here in the council chambers at 2:00 PM. So they have an opportunity to stop by. And, you know, in Peter's 24 years, he's seen a lot of, a lot of things, issues, and activity occur in the city of Lacey. And, you know, as, as I think council knows in our history, we were having some uncertainty in terms of our future and inability to plan with the issue of water rights. And Peter is very instrumental in leading that team and in discussions with ecology, with the tribes, and our other regional partners to create a water rights package that we can actually realize a lot of this development we've seen over the last 15 years. And in addition to that, you know, every other type of issue that comes up with either things that we didn't even think about, I learned, you know, the hard, you know, kind of conversation around CECs, chemicals of emerging concerns, that came up in terms of going through our wastewater system and water quality. And then also, you know, the PFAS and everything else that's come along. So he's been a guardian and stewardship of our water systems, making sure they're clean, making sure that they can be there on demand when our customers need it, but more especially for fire flow and, and conservation purposes, as well as all of our wastewater and stream team efforts. And so I just want to recognize Peter for all he's done for the city for the last 24 years. He's done quite a bit, involved in some very key and big issues for us. And I, you know, it's, I think tonight he said it's his last council meeting, so we wanted to make sure we can recognize that and also let everybody know that we're having that celebration on the 28th at 2:00 PM. So thank you, Peter.
So thank you, Peter.
Hey, before he goes, I want to add something to you.
Please do.
So I'm going to heap all kinds of honor and praise on Pete on March 28th, so I'm going to keep this really brief. But just to give perspective on the significance of Pete's retirement, since I've been here, I've worked with four operations. So the executive team in Public Works is Water Resource Manager, Operations Manager, and the City Engineer. I've worked with four operations managers. Aubrey's the second city engineer, but Pete is the only Water Resource Manager I've had the pleasure of working with. So a lot of institutional knowledge is going to lock out the door when, when Pete retires. But, but yeah, please come on the 28th, we want to heap a bunch of praise, honor, and roast him as much as we possibly can before he leaves, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Pete.
I would like to say something too. I don't know if it's the last name Brooks, but Chief Brooks, let me put it so elegantly like when he's in the room, is the smartest guy in the room. Well, I would say if the other Brooks was in the room, there might be a tie or at least a close second. You have a special gift to simplify and really complex things, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. We definitely need it. You know, to think of how far this community's come in the last 24 years. And a lot of people don't understand how this community got started with all these different water systems that had to come into one actual system, then, oh, by the way, you have to, we got hit with the fact, we have to have, you know, the water standards completely changed. And, you know, that was a big, big deal of trying to figure out how to do that. And so there's been so much that has happened, and it's the one thing that people expect is when they turn their faucet, the water comes out, and when they flush it, it goes away, right? It's like, it's the basics of everything, you know, what you do in the community. And so, yeah, I can't imagine what this city's going to be without Peter Brooks, but, you know, we really appreciate it. Okay. Next, ordinance 1675, which is the Multifamily Tax Exemption Program Expansion. Jennifer.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. It's great to see everybody again. And it is our favorite subject of the night, the Multifamily Tax Exemption Program. So tonight, I am here presenting the Proposed Ordinance Number 1675, which enhances the Multifamily Tax Exemption Program by amending key sections of the Lacey Municipal Code, specifically Chapter 3.64. This ordinance extends the MFTE eligibility to the Neighborhood Commercial District while also increasing program flexibility within the Woodland District. So for review of context, Lacey first adopted the MFTE program in 2014 with ordinance number 1452, designating the Woodland District as the city's first residential target area. The program was created to incentivize multifamily development by offering an eight-year exemption with no affordability requirements, and also a 12-year exemption requiring 20% of units to meet affordability standards. These provisions codified in LMC 3.64 establish the foundation of Lacey's MFTE program. So in recent months, staff has convened with council on several occasions to establish a forward path for expanding the MFTE program. On October 8th of 2024, council elected to move ahead with a strategic opportunity to support housing development and affordability in other areas of the city to align with the city's long-term housing and economic development goals. Council direction included three key elements. First, adding the Neighborhood Commercial District as a new residential target area and include both the 12-year option and the newer 20-year MFT option, MFTE option. Second, expand the existing Woodland District MFTE program to also include that 20-year MFTE option. And then third, to include a 12-year extension option for projects participating in the eight-year or the 12-year MFTE programs in both the Woodland District and the Neighborhood Commercial District. So recent, the recently adopted Neighborhood Commercial Code allows for ground floor residential uses, but includes affordability requirements to ensure that develop, new development provides housing options across broader, broader price points. This is particularly important to creating mixed-use districts that offer both commercial amenities and residential opportunities. By offering the 12-year MFTE option in this district, we provide an additional financial incentives for developers to include multifamily housing in their projects. This could not only help meet the affordability requirements of the neighborhood commercial zone, but also enhance the likelihood of attracting new residential development in these areas, furthering support of the city's housing goals. So to ensure the proper adoption for this ordinance, staff has followed all required steps for the MFTE expansion process. An essential step in the process was the public hearing, which was held on January 21st, 2025, during a regular city council meeting. Notably, no public comments were received from the community, which did position the council to move ahead with next process steps. And then post-public hearing, the council advised staff to proceed with the initial direction from that October 8th work session to adopt the Neighborhood Commercial District as a new residential target area and expand the program options into the Woodland District. And at the same time as the public hearing, Resolution 1161 was adopted also on January 21st of 25, at which time the council gave final direction to staff to begin preparing ordinance 1675 and update language to Chapter 3.64 of the LMC. So during this process, staff identified a provision in the existing code that had not previously been brought to council's attention and should be addressed before finalizing ordinance 1675. This provision pertains to the 12-year MFTE option language, which limits the total affordable units to no more than 30% of in, within a project. This cap was originally established over a decade ago when the MFTE launched in Lacey's Woodland District. The cap may have been prompted by concerns at the time about an imbalance between affordable and market rate units. However, in light of the council's more recent discussions aimed at expanding affordable housing opportunities in Lacey, this cap may no longer reflect the city's current housing objectives. So staff at this time sees no policy justification for maintaining this limit, particularly given the growing, growing demand for affordable housing in Lacey. Removing the 30% cap would better align the MFTE program with the council's broader housing priorities by offering developers greater flexibility, even allowing projects that could have potentially 100% of affordable units. So this evening, staff presents the council with a few options to consider for final action. Option one, approve ordinance 1675 to expand the MFTE program to the Neighborhood Commercial District and expand MFTE program options in the Neighborhood Commercial and the Woodland Districts. Option two, approve ordinance 1675 with an amendment to strike the provisions, limiting the maximum number of qualifying affordable units to 30%, as is currently codified in Chapter 3.64 of the LMC. At this, at this time, I don't know if you maybe want to have some discussion before moving forward. Staff would recommend option two.
I think, yeah, I think we need a little bit of discussion.
Yeah, for sure.
Well... I want to put the motion on the table first.
Okay.
So, so, just process. I have no idea what the council's actually going to do here. But if council did move to adopt ordinance 1675, then during discussion, if an amendment wanted to be made, a second motion could be made, making that amendment, that would be voted on, and then you would revert to the original motion.
I could do it in the original motion too, though, couldn't I? Couldn't I move to approve ordinance 1675 with an amendment to strike the provisions, limiting the maximum number of qualifying affordable units to 30%?
Second. Okay. That was simple enough. Let's have, let's have some discussion. And I guess my, my discussion is, we've, we've talked about this quite a bit, and in principle, I'm totally in favor of this, because what we haven't seen is really anyone take advantage of the affordable housing part of this, right? We've seen some people build some units specifically under the eight-year, and that did allow, you know, it helped that, made that project work, and that's good. But what we've been trying to get to is like, how do we get more affordable housing? We just had that discussion. I haven't looked at what other jurisdictions, how they've handled this, but how we're sort of looking at this, especially in the targeted areas, we're allowing for the, the longer 20-year, how this ordinance reads specifically, it says, "For properties in any residential target area for 20 successive years," blah, 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 blah. It says, "25% of those units must be built or sold to a qualified nonprofit or a local government partner that will, that will basically make sure it's staying affordable." Now, I think, I'm not sure how that works in real, real life. Because if I'm building a unit, and then where this makes sense to me to do affordable is, is as your apartments are getting a little bit older, saying, okay, I need to reinvest, what's the best way to do that? And, oh, I can now go to a 20-year, yes, 25% of the units have to be affordable, but I can make that now pencil because of that long-term benefit. But if, then I have to sell 25% of that to a nonprofit or a government agency to do that, I don't know how that works. Like, what, I mean, like I said, I don't know how other communities do it, but you would think that there just needs to be some sort of mechanism to, for them to reaffirm that those 25% of those units are affordable, but I don't know why the...
Not have to give up ownership.
Yeah, why, why would they have to give up ownership? Like, can someone explain that to me before?
Isn't it because we need somebody to do the compliance piece? Isn't that what we're asking a nonprofit to do? Sorry, go ahead, Vanessa.
But just, just to clarify, the question is regarding the 20-year MFTE section. So this would not be related to the conversation about a cap on 30%. It's a whole different section of the...
Nope.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we...
Yeah, no, I'm okay with, that's a different conversation, but I'm getting, I'm getting right into the ordinance, like...
Catching up, catching up.
Yeah. Can you, can you explain how this, that would work in real life?
So, so I have experience with one operator that's, I mean, hasn't used this MFTE, this is a new tool provided by the state. So, and Jennifer may have some history and done some research on this one. But there are operators that do ownership, this is an owner, an opportunity for ownership model versus a rental model. And so in my experience, some of these operators will actually sell the units but keep the land, and so that way they can ensure long-term affordability on those units that they've sold. But the, the person that purchases the unit still has the opportunity to build equity as they pay off their, basically their mortgage. And so they build that equity that they get to take with them when they do leave. And I don't know if that answers your question, but that is an experience that you have.
I know that's a specific example, but where I think I would feel more comfortable is if I talk to a developer who is actually going to look at this and ask them, does this make, I don't want to pass an ordinance that will never be used, right? That's a sort of like, why are we doing that? So I, and my first question when I'm reading this chapter is, I can't, I don't know who would, if you own the building and were going to even rent it, you're renting out the building, this basically says you have to give over some of those, you have to sell some of those units off to have someone else manage it. And I don't understand why.
I'm looking at Jennifer, I think she might have something to add. The one thing that I will say is this language is reflective of the state law, and so what we have put in this ordinance is required pursuant to that MFTE section for 20 years.
Yeah, I don't know that I have much...
Yeah, I don't know that I have much substantial to add to the conversation. Vanessa's correct about the language, so we are using the language that, you know, the state has provided. In my conversations with the Department of Commerce, specifically those that are guiding the MFT program, Mr. Mayor, you have some really good points to make. The Department of Commerce has said that at this time, there are only a very small amount of these 20-year projects that have come to fruition in our state. I want to say even less than five. I can certainly, you know, verify that in the near future. And what I was told again by Commerce is that in all of those cases, these went to projects that were 100% affordable. So that may have been a simpler situation to, you know, work out those details.
I think that's what this is going to force, though. I don't think anyone's going to take advantage of it for that reason.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's not a lot of logic in selling off 25% of your units within your complex.
Yeah, because this is really, is focused at trying to convert, convince the private secretary can revert a portion of their units later, right? And so, because that's the only way they can do it. It's, it's, they have their, the regular exemption, then you add the other exemption after that. And so these are units that have already been built. Now you're trying to say, okay, we want you to convert 25% of those into affordable, but you would now have to sell those up or give them up to a nonprofit to do that.
I don't get that.
I don't get how that works. So I like, I understand like the, I want to see this work. I just don't know, my like sort of common sense hat on my head saying, I don't, this seems like it's an ordinance that will never be used because no one would ever use, would do that.
Well, I mean, it's, it creates a pathway for a charitable decision by a business owner, right? So if someone wanted to create more affordable housing in the community, this would allow them to do so and receive a tax benefit. Like, it's not a money-making endeavor, right? But if someone wanted to create more affordable housing, this is a way that they could do it and accrue that bonus tax exemption.
Sure. So I guess what I do is, you know, I'm all in favor of trying to make something like this work. I just don't think we can pass this and feel like we're, we've done or we're at the end of it. I kind of feel like we need to pass this, we need to run it by, you know, some developer and see like, what, does this make sense? Is this, and do we need to tweak something? If we do need to tweak something, do we need to tweak it at the state level before we can come back? Or is there something we can do on our own to make it? Because like I said, I, I want more affordable units. I want, have a pathway, but as a business owner, I don't see how this one works.
I agree with you. I think this is a yes and.
Yeah, yes, yes.
There's no harm in us doing this, but you're right, we need to do more if we actually want to see more affordable units built in Lacey.
Yeah, because I don't think just this as is.
For it to work, they have to have the tax exemption, but be able to keep ownership of the unit. Even though they have to be, even if we have that 20-year requirement that they remain affordable for that period of time or whatever period of time, even perpetuity, but I don't see how it's ever going to get used under, except for, like you said, someone building a complete project where the whole project is affordable. That's a little different, because they don't have to give up ownership for that.
Yeah.
That's, that would be the only way this is going to happen.
Well, that.
From what we've seen, that's not something people are going to take advantage of in this community at the current time.
And when the tax exemption runs out in 20 years, you still definitely don't get those units back that you had to sell.
Yeah, it doesn't make any, anyway, I, I'm sorry, I mean, that's what I say when I, when I, when I read that, I was like, hmm.
This is not directly related to this question that we're discussing, but it's like a nitpicky thing in section, the section that we're talking about C, where it talks about the 20-year exemption, it says at least 25% of the units must be built or sold to a qualified or built or sold to a qualified nonprofit. And then it says the remaining 75%. In that second section, should it say the remaining portion of the units? Because at the top, it says at least 25%. So if somebody chose to sell 30%, they're not going to have 75% left. So should we tweak the language in the ordinance a little bit?
Yeah, that's why I kind of feel like, maybe, maybe we need to, I guess maybe pass this, but we, maybe we need to tweak it again after consultation to make sure we've thought this through.
Pass it.
That's why I don't know. Yeah.
So I think with this question come up, and just, it is a RCW language that, that's being proposed here and, you know, not being there in another situation, they may have been thinking about trying to, with the 20-year exemption, having a permanency of that, that benefit of affordable housing. But with that said, if there's questions, we could always pull this back tonight and go back and refine that language and get some more research, or council could go ahead and pass this with knowing that we would need to come back and address this particular issue as well.
I mean, is there anything that's holding us? I know.
There isn't a.
There's, I know there's nothing on the books right now, but we did pass, we passed targeted.
Correct. The, the main reason for bringing this forward, these amendments, was to address the actions that the council took to amend the neighborhood commercial zone to allow residential there provided that at least, I think it's 20% of the units were affordable. And this was a tool to expand the target zones to the neighborhood commercial areas to provide that added incentive for, for a developer. And that's the main crux of this, and of course, the 30% language, but this is another section that really doesn't, it's an opt, another tool in the toolbox, but you're really looking at the eight and 12-year items to achieve that. So there isn't anything pressing we need to act tonight? If we need to go back and take a look at that 20-year section and have more conversation about it, we can definitely do that.
I'm more comfortable personally with pulling it and coming, bringing it back to us, then.
If, if there's nothing pressing, it's going to be much simpler for staff and myself included, to not take action. We can do a little bit more work on the front end to better explain the 20-year exemption and the state law requirements, because it is state law required, but we can articulate that a little bit better for council, and then I can make that cleanup that Council Member Vasquez noted. But that means that this motion wouldn't pass.
Should I, can I withdraw the motion?
I know, we'll subvo on it and vote.
Okay, just vote it out. Okay.
The, I, I think Vanessa may have a little bit more to add on, on my comment about things being pressing, so I want.
No, yeah, because if there's something pressing.
Just for council's awareness, I have been working with a property owner, developer that has been tracking this process fairly closely and is waiting to pull the trigger on a project based on this ordinance.
Okay, well, that changes things.
So someone is willing to use it.
Well, but see, the problem is, is there's two parts of this ordinance, right? There's two parts of this ordinance. Yeah, this is, this is 20-year, but there's the other part that we need to pass for this other.
Yes, they're looking to use the 12-year.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we.
I mean, I don't have best to do that, to pass that part without the other part.
I, I say let's just pass it. My opinion is, it doesn't hurt anything to pass it. I don't think anything's going to happen on the 20-year, but we can come back and discuss that, get some more information and see if we need to make some tweaks. But between now and then, I don't think it's going to affect anyone because no one is going to do it as is, right? So I have no problem passing it and then.
And then you'll break, you'll do the research.
Do the research, come back, as long as it can come back in a, you know, then, I'm sorry, not to admit. If there wasn't a project ready to go, I would just say just.
And there's five instances where it's being implemented in the state.
And I'll, and I'll just note, it won't change the intent or the context of the ordinance at all, but we can view the 75%. I can add one word there to clarify that, and we can look at that as a scrivener's error, because that should have been included originally. So we wouldn't need to readdress that.
Okay.
Okay.
Because you're right, that is a sort of a scrivener's error there. I agree. So you can, you'll, you'll do that as a scrivener's error. Okay. Well, that makes me feel better. Is there any other discussion? I, then my recommendation is that we do pass that, can you?
Just call for the question.
Yeah, I'll just call for the question.
It's already moving seconded.
It's been moving seconded. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
We did it.
Thank you. Uh, okay.
Acid, but we want to see it, we want it back in front of us.
Um, we have one more ordinance. It's the 1676, the 2024 budget encumbrance carryover. Troy.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. This is your last ordinance you will be considering tonight. This is essentially the first budget amendment of the year. This is really limited to projects, priorities, initiatives that we weren't able to complete last year. So we'd like to do that for the council and the community within 2025, but to do that, we obviously need the adequate budget appropriation to do so. So you have about $19 million of amendments, and I would like to highlight a few of those just so you're aware of what's in there, but you do have the full details in Exhibit A of the ordinance. But again, to highlight some of the more significant projects, we have $3 million for the regional permanent supportive housing project. We have $400,000 related to an accessibility project at the Veteran Services Hub. We have a number of grants related to climate planning, middle housing, and the Growth Management Act. And we have about $300,000, $380,000 for police cars. Believe it or not, we're still dealing with some of that supply chain and slow delivery, so we'd like to complete that in 2025. And there are a long list of capital equipment purchases, capital projects related to transportation and utilities. There are significant amounts for the police station project, as well as parks and the rack. So again, you have the full details in Exhibit A. The staff proposal is that you adopt the ordinance, thus allowing us the authority to finish those projects for you and the community this year.
I'd move to adopt 2024 budget encumbrance carryover ordinance number 1676, amending the 2025 budget.
Second.
It's been moving seconded in discussion. So we do this every year, right? And I understand why we have to do it, because we authorized the money last year. It wasn't spent, so we have to come back and then authorize it again next year. But it's already been authorized. Is there a way to set up this budget encumbrance carryover ordinance so that at the first of the year, whatever wasn't carried over, I actually gets carried over to the projects and so we don't have to, like.
Consent agenda.
Like, right, like if we've gone through the process to already budget this, it just feels like we're just, this is one of those steps that we're having to do, like, of course we're going to try to finish the projects we approved from last year's budget. So is there a way to do that? We, we just sort of did it with a lot. Can we, is there a way to do that? Or is that something state law is just not going to, they're saying you're going to have to?
Right, so, yeah, it's one of your core responsibilities as a governing by this city to authorize the city manager to spend certain amounts. So, yeah, I don't think there is a way. I certainly appreciate trying to find efficiencies for that, but this is really a control element as well in terms of the council's legislative action versus our staff we're executing. So it's just a basic control.
I agree, but we did give the authorization, it just for whatever reason didn't happen by the end of the.
Right.
It's a new budget.
That authorization expires at midnight on December 31st.
But it is almost $19 million.
It's a be able to carry it over into the new year authorization. Authorization is only for the current budget year.
Current budget year.
I mean, I'm personally strongly in favor of this. I think it's a beautiful, elegant process. I work for the state. And if the state allocates money, and then for some reason we're delayed, or the equipment doesn't come in, and we don't get to spend it, it goes away. Or if we come under budget and we spend less than was allocated, there's a perverse incentive to try to figure out a way to spend that money before it gets swept, because the legislature takes it back every year. So the fact that we get to just do this and say, you know what, we didn't get a chance to finish, we're just going to keep that money where it is and spend it as we intended, it makes me really happy that we get to do this, honestly, because my day job, like, that's not how it works at all. So this is great.
Well, that is crazy, first of all, like.
This is government efficiency at its finest right here, from my perspective.
I was just trying to see if there is a way we could even, like, just confirm what we already confirmed from, I mean, anyway.
So if it's, Troy, if it's dollar for dollar.
It's all good, I was just, I was just checking, I was just checking.
If it's dollar for dollar, no up or down or, or price change or, or any of those things, can it be consented?
It could. I mean, that's really the council's, I mean, under the consent agenda portion.
We could move this over to a consent agenda at, but would you, because when do you know if you spent the money or not? Do you, is that why we're waiting until, say, right now?
Yes. Correct. So we actually keep our calendar year open till about the end of January, maybe the mid February. So we're still spending last year's dollars through that period, so we actually don't know, but I'd be happy to put on a consent agenda in the future.
Really not, it's really only about a five-minute thing, so I know.
It really is.
We've spent more time discussing how to make it more efficient than we actually spend dealing with it.
You know, I just.
When a substantial amount of money, you know, almost 19 million, it's probably better we just take this or stuff.
I guess maybe I'm just a little sensitive right now, right? Where a government body has authorized it, that should, just because you hit December 31st and it wasn't spent, doesn't mean it wasn't authorized. And so I, maybe I'm just being a little.
We also have the, other controls that come in and make sure we follow those procedures.
Okay. It's a motion to adopt, was moved and seconded to adopt 2024 budget encumbrance carryover ordinance number 1676, amending the 2025 budget. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion unanimously carries. Okay. You have anything else? Or is it? Nope. Now we're on the mayor's report. Okay. I have only one item under the mayor's report, and it's to reappoint Ruth Weigelt to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and Ruth is my, one of my favorite people in all of Lacey, and I'm happy to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I just want, Ruth, I just want to thank you so much for all you've done for Lacey for not only all the years you've done for all the other projects and part, everything you do on that, but to continue to be a part of the Lodging Tax Committee. And I know everyone has always appreciated your voice and your reasonableness and your insight to that committee. I was on that, you know, chaired that committee for many years, and now the deputy mayor chairs it. I just want to say thank you for your, your commitment to this committee for all the years.
Thank you, Ruth.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. I guess there's other one, we, we do need to reappoint the deputy mayor to chair the LTAC committee.
We're going to need some further discussion on that one.
I know it's not on the agenda, but it's, it's been something that we've been needing to do, we just haven't done it, so it's sort of formality, but I, I would move that we also reappoint the deputy mayor. Can I add a motion like this?
Be on the agenda.
You can actually bring this forward to your next council.
I can't make that motion, just.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. It's kind of a housekeeping item.
The agenda wasn't amended. I mean, it's, we're going through business and, I mean, ticky tack.
So we'll, we'll put it on a future. I just, I thought like, hey, we're right.
You'll have to wait another week.
Right here.
Maybe sometime before the first meeting. Right, right in the mix of it, but yeah.
Because the first meeting's coming up here pretty quick, that's why I, it's like, well, we don't have a chair, anyway, okay.
We can do it at the work session, even, we can put it on the, as long as it's on the agenda.
It can be on.
We can take action at the work session.
We could take action at the March 11th work session or at the March 18th council meeting.
And we will be better.
We'll be waiting.
Okay.
And, and the first LTAC committee meeting, I believe, is April 10th.
Okay.
Okay, it's a little, a little ways off.
That's just my birthday.
Okay, okay. Well, see, let me try and be efficient. Getting in trouble. City manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We have one item on the, my report tonight, and invite Jason Cassani up, our utilities engineer, to present on a public bid award for a lift station conversion project for Lift Station 11.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. It's always a pleasure to come before you and present some of the interesting projects that we get to work on here at the city. Today, staff recommends that we award Lacey Project Number PW 2022-11 to Low Bitter Barcock Construction from Chehalis, Washington, in the amount of $1,113,312.39. I'm happy to say that this was and came in under the engineer's estimate of $1,392,334.34. We got 10 bids on this one. We got 10 bids on this one. We've allotted 250 working days and plan to begin work April of 2025. Lift Station 11 Improvements Project, this is a project that plans to convert a vacuum-prime lift station that was originally constructed in 1980 to a submersible lift station, submersible pump lift station, also bring it up to current city standards with some other electrical and mechanical components. Originally, we have took a look at this lift station. We've evaluated how, if it was possible, abandoning the lift station. This one was one of our trickier lift stations for our staff to maintain, especially during extreme weather events where we would have to, because it was never originally outfitted with a backup generator. And this has a pretty steep driveway that was, that was difficult for our staff to bring down a trailer-mounted backup generator. Since then, I think in 2019, we had a overall arching project, lift station generator project that outfitted different sites with backup generators, and this is one of the sites that was outfitted with that generator. And it then made upgrading this lift station site a lot more feasible. So this lift station is located in Alda-Glen Community. And again, like I said, this was converting a vacuum-prime lift station to submersible. I'm showing you kind of the vicinity map along with the site map of the, of the project. You can see at the bottom-left corner is the existing wet well that's the vacuum-primed lift station, the new generator that was added in 2019, and we are converting that wet well to a flow-through manhole and installing a new wet well with valve vaulting control panel and all that to bring it up to current standards. Just to give you an idea, that existing wet well with the mechanical components, we have a picture there that actually shows the, what we call a little doghouse that has the vacuum-primed pumps. If you imagine, it's sort of like just a straw sucking out the wastewater and pushing it up the hill. But we're gonna convert that to a flow-through manhole. I've got just a generic picture of a manhole that kind of gives you an idea. We're just gonna be filling in the bottom of that wet well with a bunch of concrete to channelize it and redirect that flow into the new wet well. And then we're also gonna be doing some other improvements like coating inside the existing wet well and the other improvements as I've shown on the site plan. That pretty much covers this project. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'd move to award Lacey Contract Number PW 2022-11 to Low Bitter Barcock Construction LLC from Chehalis, Washington in the amount of $1,113,312.39.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead.
This looks like a really, really, I mean, the definition of competitive bid process because there's 10 bidders and the difference in the first and last bid is like 1.87 million. That's like insane.
That, I think, was more about just an error in some of their numbers. So when they fill out the form, we have to go back into and enter them into our system and sometimes they just do the math a little bit wrong. So that one was more of just an anomaly that brought it up so high.
Yeah, I mean, even from the second to last, it's still, you know, 740,000, something like that. So, I mean, substantial savings, right?
For sure. It was nice to see so many bidders on this one.
Is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded to award this contract to the low bidder. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
That concludes my report tonight.
Okay. Then we're on to boards, commission, and committee reports. I am up first, but I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor?
I do. So February 26, the EDC Board met. We have added two new board members. Our number-one draft pick was Dave Iall from the Nisqually Tribe. And from the port, our pick was Commissioner Jasmine Vasavada. These additions bring the current membership of the board to 26 members. The 2025 budget was approved, the operational budget for the EDC, also the budgets for the CBNI and the Lacey Makerspace and the newly-formed Pacific Salish Economic Development District. It's a, it's a thin budget, but it's a starting spot, so that, that EDD work will begin now. And chairing that is Annette Roth. The emeritus board did meet and discuss the Pacific Salish Economic Development District, recruitment for new investment into the county with prior efforts in long-range mission, business retention. One of the other real key focus areas is that the EDC will be focusing on is, is more private dollars. And part of the reason for that is because we sometimes have a difficulty matching dollars for projects. So there's, there's things that we are unable to do because the dollar-for-dollar match or the 20% match just isn't there because the private dollars are so sorely needed in that area. We also had Dave Mastin, who is the VP of Government Affairs for the Association of Washington Business, provide an overview of the current state legislative session and outline some critical issues that would have had, will have an impact on the state and regional economies. Some of those things are apex grant dollars. Most of those for us are pass-through because we are the fiduciary for pretty much all the other EDCs. So those, those dollars are very important to the EDC, and we'll be monitoring those, those potential cuts if and when they come through. And that is my report.
Councilmember Greenstein.
Just one report. Thurston County Medic One Emergency Medical Services met on February 27th. And really just, most of the meeting was taken up by one topic, and that was a pretty vigorous, somewhat heated maybe, discussion of the 2025 EMS Comprehensive Plan, which I was on that Comprehensive Plan Committee, and we've been working on it for about a year. But we had a very good discussion, and in the end, we did approve referring it to the Board of County Commissioners for their review and approval. But that took up most of the meeting. The only other thing of consequence is Stan Moon was re-elected as chair, and I was re-elected as vice chair. I think this makes, I don't know, seven, eight, nine years, something like that. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
All my committee assignments are coming up. No report.
Councilmember Cox.
Okay, two reports. The first is from the February 19th intercity transit meeting. We dealt with a couple of just routine business topics, authorizing the general manager to execute a contract with a firm called Connect Point Incorporated in the amount of $559,884. We also authorized the general manager to execute a task order with WSP in the amount of $569. General Manager Emily Bergkamp gave a brief report on contract negotiations with the Amalgamated Transit Unit Union, which represents bus drivers, customer service representatives, and dial-a-lift specialists. These negotiations began in November, and they have been contentious at times. We have a bunch of dedicated union members who show up at every authority meeting and speak during public comment, pointing out their concerns about current wages. On the other side of that, the intercity transit senior staff and authority board members are bargaining in good faith and hope that we can reach an agreement on the contract without having to go to arbitration. And on a brighter note, March 18th is National Transit Employee Appreciation Day, which is when we honor our essential transit workers and heroes. So if you ride the bus and you like the experience, be sure and tell your driver how much you liked it. They would appreciate hearing from you. And Regional Housing Council met on February 26. We elected new officers. County Commissioner Emily Klaus is the new chair, and Tumwater City Council Member Michael Althouser is the vice chair. We approved a recommendation from the Housing Council's Homeless Services Advisory Board to authorize spending $16,700 in emergency fund for the OLEMAP. This is the Olympia Mutual Aid Partners Safer Spaces Outreach and Advocacy Program. This organization provides harm reduction services to unsheltered individuals in Thurston County with a focus on fire safety and addressing hazardous or illegal burning in camp communities such as the Jungle, Percival Creek, and Decatur Woods. They provide life-saving supplies such as shelter and warming materials and connect participants to essential services and resources to help them shelter in place safely. Without this funding, the, with the rapid increase in population at the Jungle, it would have meant having to reduce services per participant by nearly two-thirds. There's, I think we have a five, well, several hundred thousand dollars set aside for emergency funds, and we felt like this was a good use of those funds for that. And it was approved. So we also approved directing $125,000 from the LOT Affordable Housing Support Programs Regionally Shared Pool of Funding for the Franz Anderson Permanent Supportive Housing Project, which is being currently built in Olympia. In 2023, LOT created an Affordable Housing Support Program pilot, which provides a 50% rebate on connection fees for developers of permanent supportive housing or low-income housing. And this was done to encourage developing these kinds of housing within the LOT service area. This program now has gone from pilot to an official program. There's $500,000 available to the participating jurisdictions for the 25, 26 biennium. Each jurisdiction has access to $125,000. And then additionally, another $125,000 was dedicated to a regionally-shared pool. So we decided all the pool money needs to go into this project, which is gonna provide, I believe, 162 units of permanent supportive housing. So it's a big deal. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Vasquez.
We've got the Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting coming up on Friday, so we're gonna be hearing an update on LOT and an update on intercity transit. We've got folks coming from both those organizations just to give us a general update on what they're working on. And we're also going to be reviewing the regional transportation plan, future conditions. So we've got plans in the works to address congestion we anticipate in the future as the population grows across Thurston County. So we'll be talking a little bit about what that anticipated congestion looks like, some of the pain points, and some of the projects we have to try to address it in the future. It aligns nicely with some of the work going on around the county related to comprehensive planning. So more to come once we actually have the meeting. That's it.
Okay. Well, with that, it is 7:29. I'm gonna call a recess for 10 minutes, and the council's going to go to the back of the room, but we'll have a little bit of break, and we'll reconvene at 7:39 for council discussions on the Metropolitan Park District. So until then, I'm adjourning, recessing for 10 minutes. Yeah? When was the last time?
Okay, there we go. It is 7:39, just turned 7:40. We're going to call this meeting back into order to talk about Metropolitan Parks District.
Can I share screen? Rick's going to get us started.
Yes. Just as a quick recap, and the council knows we've talked about the Metropolitan Parks District for quite some time, going back, well, several years, but more recently, last year with the formation of the Parks Improvement Funding Work Group, and then receiving that recommendation in the end of December. And in January 14th, the council had a work session to talk about that recommendation and more deeper dive. And then that followed up a conversation at the council retreat in terms of, more specifically, what Metropolitan Parks District boundary. So, in continuing to move forward, we want to have this touch base with the council this work session tonight, because we are on a clock. We're going to go out for the Metropolitan Parks District in 2025. To date, the councils, through their conversations, have given specific direction on the Metropolitan Parks District boundary to be the same boundary as the city jurisdiction, and it's also identified August 8th as the date to put the ballot out to the public. So, in doing so, we do need to make sure we are able to file a resolution that's passed and adopted by council, setting the ballot measure, file that with the Thurston County Auditor's Office by May 2nd. So, tonight, because there's still a critical piece to go include on the language for the ballot and that resolution is the actual levy rate or the levy that the city is going to ask the voters to approve. So, that's what the focus is on tonight's discussion. At the January meeting, the council did talk about the levy and the parks projects, both new capital projects and the replacement projects that are in the parks capital improvement program, and the recommendation of the work group on which project should be focused on initially. At that meeting, there was some informal head nods at the conclusion of the conversation about looking at the levy amount that the work group recommendation. But again, we want to go back and revisit that conversation to make sure council is fully supportive of the amount or fully aligned on what the ask of the voters would be. So, tonight, we're going to go through a little bit of overview of the timeline, what they've already accomplished and what needs to happen by certain timeframes going forward. We're going to talk about the work group's recommendation levy rate, then highlight the priority projects, and remind council of that conversation of how you discuss the work group's recommendation, kind of realign some of those priority projects, and then have a conversation amongst the council about what is the appropriate levy amount to ask the voters to approve, and what does that mean in terms of what is delivered in terms of parks program, parks properties to the public. And then finally, we'll highlight where we are on developing a communication strategy that will then be finalized going into either by the end of this month or the first part of April. So, with that, if there's not any questions about tonight's conversation, again, if we are able to get, if council is able to get direction on the levy amount tonight, that's great. There needs to be more conversation. We do have a placeholder in the March, I want to say 28th work session, 25th work session, March 25th work session, to be able to come back and revisit if there's more discussion to be had. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jen, Josie, and Troy to kind of go through some of the nuts and bolts and forward the council conversation.
All right. Thank you, Rick. And the one thing, after the communication strategy, we're going to have Dave take just a few minutes to do a brief training regarding use of public facilities and resources. Let's see. All right. And then Rick mentioned a few of these items on the timeline. Let's see. So, we have the, obviously, there's some things that have been checked off already, the work group, as you know, the boundary, as Rick mentioned, and the ballot date. So, here we are here. We're going to talk about high-level communication strategy tonight, resolution and ballot language. Rick already mentioned that one. And then communication plan will be finalizing by the end of this month. Here's that date of April 1st, where we need that resolution adopted. The very latest action could be April 15th by council to hit this May 2nd deadline to the auditor's office. And then there in between, you see the April through August there on the timeline of community information distribution and engagement. And then here we have, as Rick mentioned, the August 5th election. And so, as Rick said, we're looking for council direction on the levy amount. Just a quick reminder of the Parks Improvement Funding Group's recommendation was to go forward, obviously, with the MPD. They recommended the 45 cent levy rate per 1,000 assessed valuation, which generates 5.9 million annually for parks and costs the average homeowner $225 in property tax. And so, we're going to put a pin in this one, talk about, kind of switch over to council priorities, and then circle back to this discussion. So, really, we're looking for council feedback and really, you know, that reconciliation to what the work group came up with as priority projects. Last time council discussed the projects on the Parks Capital Improvement Program, it seemed council was interested in potentially moving the additional spray parks further up and like putting, grouping those together. Council also expressed interest in seeing where the projects were geographically. So, we prepared a handout to distribute to you. The projects are color-coded by themes, which we're going to get to a little bit later in the presentation with a communication strategy. But this, we will go ahead and pass this out so you can kind of see geographically how these fall. If you guys don't mind taking one or passing it around. While you're taking a peek at that. Also, up that PCIP. Did everybody get one? If you want to pass any extras over, just keep them going around, that's great. Thank you. So, here is a slightly updated Parks Capital Improvement Program. As you recall, we had the capital projects on a separate list and the replacement projects. But the, the, but they're all listed on this map here. But a couple, couple of updates. So, as I said, removed those spray parks, numbers one through four, into one line item. So, you'll see updated here. The other update I wanted to share with you is the YMCA confirms they're still interested in partnering on the indoor playground and the future pool project, but not knowing exactly when this would actually get built. They weren't able to commit now to operating the indoor playground. So, I've added here a maintenance and operation estimate of $150,000 a year. And so, this way, the city would be in control of actually providing that deliverable to the community and being able to operate it. I also removed the pool since, as you know, we don't have that total funding package determined for that portion. But all of the partners, I'll speak for myself in my own opinion, but also NTPS and YMCA would very much like to see the pool come to fruition in the future. But of course, for MPD purposes, we would not be able to deliver a pool. And so, it makes sense to remove that from the list. But the way that the city can help with that partnership effort is to continue to monitor that Defense Communities Infrastructure Program or the DCIP and potentially apply for that when the total funding package comes together. And then here's those replacement projects. And I'm going to, I'm going to skip to the next screen. You've seen this multiple times, but we can come back as needed. So, what we have prepared for you here is a six-year comparison, a side-by-side of a 45 cent per 1,000 assessed valuation and a 30 cent scenario. And just a reminder that all of these numbers are approximate. So, that's why you've got the little symbol there. So, this is meant to give a broad overview of the difference between the two levy amounts. This also shows the commitment of that 60% toward capital and 40% toward M&amp;O. You can see it's split out here. So, here on the left, we've got the 45 cent per 1,000. In the first six years, it would generate $35.6 million, which would mean, you know, approximately 21.4 toward capital and 14.2 toward M&amp;O. And with the 30 cent scenario, the total is 3.9 million per year. In the first six years, would generate 23.7 approximately million with the breakdown here of capital to M&amp;O. We do also want to get consensus from the council about that 60-40 split, knowing that it's not always going to be that exactly, because like in the beginning, there's more capital, and then as you build things, there's going to be more M&amp;O. Here, you've seen this before, this is a little familiar. This is another way to look at it, the levy revenue generation. So, there they are, side-by-side again, with the 30 cent scenario and 45 cent. I mean, you have other scenarios as well, but just kind of looking at these two as a comparison. And then here, the impact to an average homeowner in Lacey, which is currently at $500,000, that average impact. And so, here with the 30 cent levy, it's $150 per year to the average homeowner versus the 45 cent scenario is $225 per year to the average household.
Do you want questions as you go, Jen, or would you?
That was a good time to write to that discussion point.
Yeah. There's stuff that invites us to discuss. Yeah, there it is. Yes, perfect. Yep, circling back to confirmed levy, yes.
I like the fact that a lot of this is midtown and south. I, I, I just got, you know, the county's little three-by-five or four-by-whatever, whatever, you know, the card we're talking about, got a few of those. And my numbers are up across the board. And so, on one, I'm looking at additional 700 bucks a year, so like 60-something a month. And I imagine by the time that August rolls around, maybe I won't feel the sting as much, and I'll be ready to take on some new financial responsibilities in my, my property tax structures. I'm for this plan, and I, one of the things that I've been thinking about is, you know, as, because, you know, a lot of the new stuff that's, that's just been built is not going to hit the tax roll, and we have like, what, 12 months before it hits the roll for, for those properties to, to fall into this 45 cents. So, so the 45 cents may start to get smaller as, within a year of this happening. And when we do have a full annexation plan, it'll continue to shrink. So, I like what we're attempting to do. I just, and I know we haven't got to the messaging part of it yet, but I, it's, I feel like it's critical that the residents truly understand that this is just affecting Lacey's portion, not the rest of the assessments out there or the levies that are, that are out there. So, you know, 225 or 1875 a month might even be a little more than what is actually going to happen. But we are preparing people with worst-case scenario. That's all I have right now.
I'm not sure you can do that even in the pub. I mean, if you're going out for 45 cents, you got to say you're going out for 45.
I know. So, yeah, I know. So, I've been, you know, personally, I, I'm in favor of the idea of starting off with a lower number and raising up. I understand we've had a lot of conversation about this on how that works. I, and it's unfortunate the way that the law, how it states where you have to put a, a beginning number per assessed value, right? Because what we, what we really care about is how much money we're, need to raise to do the projects that our community wants. By forcing us to put a, a number at the beginning, it really limits us up what we can, you know.
Flexibility.
The flexibility. Because it'd be much better, in my opinion, if we could go out and in the first year, say, raise 3 million, wherever that number is, you know, and slowly ramp that up over years to get to the 5.9 million or whatever that is. Because we always put this in terms of property taxes based on the resident. But it's, it's, it's more than that. It's the overall assessed value of the community that then sets it at the beginning, right? And so, we have a lot of commercial property in the city of Lacey, and that is affecting all this too. And then, as has been pointed out with the new annexation that comes on, that adds to the overall assessed value, and, you know, also, you're looking at a different rate. So, it's so hard to say what is, what should the rate be when we really, I wish we could look at what can the number be? And, but I, I don't know how we get around that. So, can you?
So, can you again explain to me why, how that phased approach, what that would actually do to, say, we did start off on a lower percentage and set it over five years, it goes up to a different percentage. What does that actually look like in terms of dollars raised? I mean, how, how does that actually get calculated? Because I know-
25 cents, 35 cents, 45 cents.
Yeah. Well, some, some, I mean, that's in an ideal world when you have to go with percentage, which I wish we didn't have to do. I wish we could do it. I wish we could state how much we need to raise and then that would say what the, would be. Because there's so many other factors that, that change. And what we really need to know is, can we raise a certain amount of money to meet the needs of our community? But putting it on a percentage basis, it's, it leaves so much unknown out there. And, and property taxes are already so confusing. That's what I'm, I think ultimately worried about is people hear like what we just said, oh, for the average homeowner, it's going to cost this. There's so much, there's such a wide range of taxpayers of, of what it would do to someone who, you know, has less property, someone that has more property. So, I know we say that, but it, there's, it's more complicated than that, as we all, as we all know. And it's the complication that leads to the confusion, that leads to uncertainty that I'm worried about in, in this circumstance. And so, can, so can we just again discuss what it would look like if we, I, I know it's not the preferred. The easiest way is just go 45 cents and we're done, right? That's the easiest way. But also, I want this to pass. And so, I have to, I'm still, I'm thinking about that too. And so, I want to make sure the city has the resources in, in the long, long term.
The only thing I would add to that is, I don't think it changes the ability to pass it, whether you go 30 or 45 or you do it progressive. I honestly don't, I think if the people are going to support it, they're going to support 30 or 40. It's not going to change, I don't think it changes the outcome, changing the number. I mean, if you got, you know, too far short. But I don't think there's any difference in the outcome of the election going from 30 to 45. I really don't.
I agree.
I do like-
I don't know that it's going to pass, but I think that's the same in either case.
I do like the idea of staging because it stretches the dollar, you know, the value over time as other properties, evaluation goes up, right? And it's an easier, like we did it with our utilities, right? We staged that up.
Yeah.
Or the gambling tax. We staged it up, we staged it down.
It's a lot easier though. I know, and that's, that's why I want to-
But then you don't get this whole sticker prize shock at the same time, but you're also building towards your common goals of meeting these amenities for the city, right? A healthy, vibrant city that you've come to expect and, you know.
And I, I do want to talk about like projects and stuff, but it, it, it's almost like, what's, what's hard if you, if we sort of, sort of put it all out on the table from day one, but it's really hard to say what happens if an opportunity comes up where we really want such-and-such to happen, but since we didn't put in a list of something because we didn't, we forgot about it, we can't take advantage of it.
And when grant money comes to bill, what do we do, matching?
Well, and, and one of the reasons, you know, there's a lot of really cool projects out there that have been sort of on the books for a long time, but the public just hasn't heard about them.
And so-
This is an opportunity for that too, because again, this, the reason why the work group recommend, you know, recommended going for that MPD because it provides the most flexibility and long-term sustainable funding source. So, when you look at that list of, of 24 capital projects and eight or nine, or seven or eight replacement or whatever the numbers are, it's really actually long-term going to be able to accomplish all of it. It's just what's the focus right off the gates to be-
What do we do first?
Right, do first, right. And so, I think that's part of the messaging is get people more aware of all these different projects, but also there's going to be the need to look at, you know, there could be nuances that come up with, through the design-construction process or affordability that things could change depending on opportunity too. But we want to make sure we have clear messaging of, these are the things we're going to accomplish and these are the things we're going to focus on and that right, right away to show immediate value to the, to the taxpayers.
I like the framing of like these different buckets of types of projects that you've got here on the slide, because we still want flexibility, like the mayor's saying, that if some opportunity arises, we, you know, a piece of land where we want to build something, we may be able to do that in the future. But I think one of the problems in the past, when we did this last time, was that there wasn't specificity around what we intended to do with the money. And I think it's not really about the 30 cents versus the 45 cents. It's, do you want parks? And do you think that we're going to make good on our promise that if we, you know, pass this tax, we're going to build these nice parks for you? And being able to show specific examples of what we want to do with the money, I think will be very persuasive.
Yeah, this is what you get for your, your first dollar.
Sure. And there's, that's sort of gone on the, on the communication side. And I think there's, you know, we need to have some conversation about. The other thing that I know that's going to come up and the worry that the community is going to have is that, and I'm not sure how we quite do this yet, but there's the whole supplant language, right?
I have, I have something to share on that.
And so, I, I know there's been some other discussion out there and I think we got to be real careful, but I, I do think we need to make sure that, and one, we don't sort of pigeonhole ourselves into something, but that also we, we make it known that we're not planning on taking necessarily away from our budget, that this-
That's really important.
That's really important. But it's really important to get that language right too. And so, I think that's something that sort of needs to be some discussion that goes around that. And I, I know you have a little bit.
Yeah, I received a letter from Jim Lazar in Olympia, who's been a big critic of the way the Olympia Metropolitan Park District was set up, because there is some supplanting that's happening, happening there. So, he has proposed some language that I'd be happy to send to all of you. I sent you a copy earlier today, Rick, and I'll share with Dave too. But he proposes language that would say, "The authority of the Metropolitan Park District to levy a property tax is contingent upon the city of Lacey appropriating a minimum of X percent of general fund revenues to parks in the prior year." And we get to say what that number is. "This condition can be waived for one year by a five-member supermajority of the city council in situations where the city's general fund revenues have declined by 10% or more in a single year." So, it's kind of a loophole escape hatch if there is a true funding emergency, is what he's proposing.
It scared me.
Well, if I can kind of weigh it on that- And, and this is something I think we need to talk about, because in principle, I agree. In reality, I don't know. For example, as we know, our budgets change quite a bit and there's new things that come up all the time. And if we get too subscriptive, like then we're sort of pigeonholed, like we, it could have some major budget repercussions for something down the line that happens. So, I, I think it's important we have some supplant language in there, but I think it needs to be the, the right language. And I haven't quite figured out what that language is. I think that might, that worries me.
Can we always look at the question from last time?
Yeah.
The, and we can have some more conversation about that type of language, because as part of the work group recommendation, I think they did talk about a little bit about this type of issue. And their, their, their conclusion is, look, this is a long-term funding source and you're going to need to, you know, use it to build park expansions and the maintenance of those facilities. And the intent or the, the recommendation is to ensure that we're continuing the consistent funding we currently are providing to parks. The language, you know, we have to look at that language, be careful, because also too, depending on the language, it could create a challenge with future council decisions and how to utilize increasing revenues to be able to fund other council priorities in addition to parks. You know, so, so those are the type of things you need to be thinking about long-term as well as now and trying to figure out how the best message to the, to the voters and make sure that what they're paying for is going to park suspensions and the maintenance of those park expansion facilities.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with talking about some supplant language, but I want to, I'd rather hear it from, from our finance team, from our side of things, what makes sense than like just have a, you know, something out there that I'm not quite sure what the actual effect that would be long, long-term for the rest of the MPD's history. So, I agree with, we, there should be something, I'm just not sure if that's the right thing.
And, and going back to it first, you know, even before we even get to that point, you also got to figure out what is that, you know, rate that we're going to ask the voters to prove and, and show them what the value they're going to get for that rate. And it goes back to that levy amount. And I know we've talked about the phased approach and, and 45 cents recommended by the work group as well as, you know, the talk about something a little bit less than that, but just want to make sure we-
I like the stage thing, but we put, we asked a lot of people to spend a lot of time to come up with this dollar amount, right? The, you know, and, and we should really value that. I mean, I would like to see like a 36, 40, 44 stage, but with the recommendation of, you know.
Well, they did, not that, the work group's recommendation was to look into seeing what a stage approach may look like, isn't it?
I think they said start at 45 and go up, is what they said.
I know.
Well, they, they recommended that a phased approach be considered.
Considered.
Yeah. And then, I believe the council talked about it after that point and-
Yeah.
And talked about how, so, if I understand correctly, you'd have to go out for the top.
Yeah, the full amount, but it started as bottom stage.
And then it, and then it would be a matter of, and maybe Troy can chime in, but I, I know that the council discussed that that would, could be confusing to people.
It's like what happened in Tumwater, where it wasn't, it, it created problems for them actually accessing the pool not to the money.
Still good problems though, because they got theirs passed, you know, so it's a good problem to have.
Sure.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Same thing happened at EMS, trying to do a phased approach is the, the funding amount being far less than anticipated.
Well, I know, but what we're caring about is, can you get to the 5.9 and you're, say, whatever? And so, you have to make a-
I don't know the answer.
I don't know the answer to that and I know you have to make a guesstimation from day one, what that looks like. I just want, what does that guesstimation look like?
No, so we had what the six-year tip or whatever, you know, maybe we do it every two years, do, do, you know, the 36, go to 40 and then go to 44.
That's, if, I don't know, like-
I don't know why we're complicating it.
Yeah, that's one of the things too, is there's one thing, talking about the phased approach, but also depending on what it looks like, it's also needs to be something understandable by the, by the voter.
I understand that.
But the valuation that Malcolm was bringing up is, is a real consideration too, you know, because we have a lot of the stuff coming on the books and so that just means it amounts to being a little bit less.
That's going to be the case every year though. There's always new stuff coming on the books every year. That doesn't change.
Not like the last couple of years.
I don't, I don't think-
Yeah, but the next few aren't going to be as big.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't think the dollar amount on a monthly basis or an annual basis, at least for the residential side, maybe not the commercial, is going to freak these people out. And I say that because the average, you know, our, it's $500,000 to live in this community period if you want to buy something, right? And so, 20 bucks doesn't freak these people out on a monthly basis. I think we just really need to focus on establishing value in what you're going to get for your 20 bucks, you know?
Absolutely.
I think we've, we've demonstrated over the last who knows how long, that we are pretty serious about our parks department. In addition to that, the parks budget currently, if I, my numbers are right, is roughly around 3% of the budget, somewhere in that ballpark and this would, this would raise it to 4.5%.
It's so complicated because we have our parks, then we have the rack. Now, are there, now we're going to have a future phase of the rack. And then, the, right? And so, there, it's, it's complicated when you actually, that's why-
I wouldn't want to set any set, kind of like Jim Lazar's language, it scares the hell out of me, that language. Because of that, you're setting some percentage of the budget that's going to be used for parks right up front. That's not how we operate.
Yeah, that's, that's-
Well, no, it's, I'm just saying, that's the way, that's the way the numbers bear out. And when you look at the budget, that's the way it is right now. You know, and so, if, if we do this and we add this, then we bring that number to about 4.5% of the budget. I'd like to know what that's compared, how that compares to other jurisdictions.
But again, every jurisdiction's a little bit different in how they fund their parks. It's hard to do apples-to-apples comparisons and we can go back and pull some of that, that information of what general fund dollars are, are being applied. But again, it gets back to, you know, you can have, we can have the conversation about supplant language and it really gets back to what are we delivering for the value that we're asking for?
That's right.
And it really just, what it really gets down to, even with, you know, the topic of, you know, supplanting or not, it's really what's the value being given to the public for what they're, they're paying for.
Here's the kind of projects you see if, if, if the money's approved.
Yeah. Glosses and maybe some pop-ups.
Some nice, some of that nice paper.
Yeah, the good stuff, like capital one cents.
Yes.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with going, you know, saying, not looking at the phased approach. I, I just, I don't know, I, it does, it does scare me a little bit. People are really sort of conscious, especially right now. There's a lot of uncertainty in our, our community and understandably. So, I just, I just want to make sure we really have thought about all that, because I do think it's the most important thing is if we do pass an MPD that is supplying additional funding, if we don't, I mean, that's why I'm, I'm still sort of curious. I feel like if, it would help, if a phased approach would help for the average person because they're not feeling it as, as much.
And I would argue when you have, you know, in tougher times, you need cheaper things to do and that's utilizing your park system. You don't have to drive 100 miles to enjoy someone else's park system. It's a quality life thing, you know, it's, all goes hand-in-hand. You can pack a lunch and you can make, you can take your whole family out for pennies on the dollars compared to, you know, tens, if not hundreds of dollars going somewhere else.
And we can do more of what we're kind of, like what we're saying we're going to do sooner, if we start at 45. Because the difference for the average homeowner is $6 a month, between the 30% and the 45%. $6 a month.
And I would argue, any, any city on average spends 60% on public works and a tenth of that on their park system, which would bring us, our 3% up to 6%.
Yeah, I just think it's, again, I do think the message matters and I'm, I'm, that's where I just want to make sure we, we have, we got that right, because it's real-
The message doesn't change, I mean, whether we're doing 30 cents, 45 cents, graduated or just going straight at 45, I honestly don't think that changes the message.
Yeah.
I think the education strategy is going to matter a lot.
I think it's the staycation kind of idea. You save money to stay in home, you know, and the money stays here.
So, talk about the communication.
Yeah, we could go into communication, but I want to make sure we kind of conclude back and see where we are on, on the levy discussion, so.
Okay. Uh, yeah, so, like I said, we've been focusing on themes, which I'll show you here on the next slide. And then, we're also developing a communications plan. Parks and Communications have already been working together, which I will share about as well. So, here we have priority projects and themes. And so, what we've done here is, you know, the, the key takeaways from the comprehensive plan update, we took that and then developed themes that align with, directly with the needs and an update on, you know, some of the things that we actually can provide. Like I use the example of the pool isn't something that the MPD could fund. So, you'll notice that that's not on the list here. But we've got aquatics and indoor playground. So, you've got the spray park at the Unchildened Family Center, indoor playground at the Unchildened Family Center and then other spray parks.
Okay, wait, wait. I don't want to be the only one that needs to ask this question, but I need to ask this question, but why is the pool exempt from these dollars?
Well, the pool, there's not a, there's not a funding plan for the full pool. So, the, the other-
It's not exempt from the dollars. There's no plan for it.
It's not, right, yeah. At this, at this time, at this time.
It'd be very difficult to say we're going to do it when we don't even have a partner to see if we could do it.
Yeah.
Like, wait, there's a partner that may be out there, but-
It sounded like, whatever happens, no pool with these mon, with this money.
Well, no. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I, what I was trying to convey is that if we promise something, we want to be able to deliver on that. And that vision, that long-term vision is still there. The partners are still all very interested.
And it's all part of the capital, part of the capital program for the long term.
Jen, I think that's the most critical thing.
I get it. It kind of felt like-
We don't want to, we can't prom, we should not promise anything that we can't really deliver.
Yeah.
Ever.
To make sure we can deliver what we're telling people we're going to do with money.
Yeah, so that's where, you know-
One thing I'm worried about, I believe that if we're going to use this as a header in some published piece, is use of the word aquatics, which to me says pool. Is use of the word aquatics, which to me says pool. And I'm wondering if we might wanna look at that wording and tweak it just a little bit. Those are the kinds of things that can get tripped up and twisted really quick.
I, I do think there is a, um, a big desire for to have things where you can enjoy during the summer. I mean, uh, like the expansion at Long Lake Park and amenities there, like, you know. To, to have like the, the, the Wantress Park not even on here seems kind of crazy because that is really a. Just amazing, you know, property that's not being used at all because it's been just sitting there and we haven't been able to develop it. I think if people saw it, they would be very excited about the possibility. And so that, that's sort of under the idea of water, right? And so I don't, I, I think, um, having amenities. For our summer use like spray parks, like improvements at our lakes is a good selling point. I just think we have to be careful with the, the, the language there and how we, how we use it.
Are we able to illustrate these things, renderings or anything like that that we can, as we talk about communications and. I mean, this, cool, right, doesn't show me what you're gonna do to park A, B, C, or D. And so that's, I know that that's probably common and I don't mean to jump ahead, but I know the chance.
Yeah, we can certainly, we can certainly take a look at that.
Lifting in the communications portion as well.
Right, so this is, um, yeah, just kind of an overview of, of what we're starting to think about with the communication strategy, but can certainly be finessed. Um, the second category is trails and open space access, so we have Wonderwood Park Trails resurfacing. Great Kyo Park next phase with additional trails, um, and then increased access to natural areas. And then outdoor amenities, we have new and expanded features into existing parks, for example, pickleball, skate and bike features and other assets. Um, we have the Meridian Park Sports Fields, Hunter Park Amenities, Holman Park Picnic Area. And then again, there again, the Great Kyo Park next phase, um, comes into play into this theme as well with the playground. Expansion of adding the zipline there. And then, like I said, we have started a draft communications plan, Parks and Communications, in working together. And so just to let you know, the different, um, sections of that communications plan include the situation. Why are we here? Why are we talking about this? The audiences and those are residents, property owners, parks users and stakeholders. Um, and part of the audience section is the, the schedule of community meetings and reaching out to those stakeholder groups. There's another section called key messages in the communications plan, um, another one called tactics. And underneath tactics, it includes media materials such as flyers, the website, social media. It also includes a schedule of when those types of things would go out. Um, there's a section called talking points and then there's a Q and A, um, section as well. So we'll be bringing the plan to share with council next time we meet. And it's important to note that the communications plan is for informational purposes, it does not advocate for or against an MPD. Uh, but rather it's sharing information and facts and that is the city staff's role and it's perfect segue to Dave's portion.
Yeah, Dave. Well, cause the, the, the other thing, like, I think we got it, it's, it's so difficult, like I. We're trying to point out the, the types of things that we're going to do, but if we get like. Like, like, I, I, like, I don't, I don't think anyone in the communities can be super excited that the rack's gonna get a new irrigation control update. Right, like, you get a new irrigation control update, you go past this, and so like.
Yeah, that's not, that, that, that is not part of the.
Yeah, like.
That's not like the frontline.
I know, but.
Just like if, if you go back to, go back, if you go back a slide, Jen. Even on there, like, the wording obviously needs, you know, work, I mean, like, I wouldn't use assets. I wouldn't use amenities, I, I think there, you've gotta make it more direct about what people are looking for. They're not thinking about assets, they're thinking about playgrounds.
Yeah, and that's where we need to be, you know.
You gotta put, yeah, you gotta make this, it's gotta, I mean, I get we can't push for or against. But we need to be selling what we're gonna do and what people are looking for. Now, we as council, of course, that's a whole different story, we can, we can advocate.
When you're selling.
We can advocate, yeah, the city can.
Money.
So also.
There's some, there's some side portion.
On the.
Not here, I'm here.
On the aquatics and indoor playground thing, I also wonder about talking about the. Young Child and Family Center is the first thing out of the chute when this doesn't exist yet and won't for some time. You may wanna take a look at that too.
Yeah, but indoor playground should go way up high, there's a lot of families want that, oh, yeah.
They do, but I mean, both, both of those things are, are the thing that doesn't exist, so it, yeah, I'm, I'm sure that tie in can help.
And again, like, like I said, like, we should say upgrades at, you know, for replacement upgrades at Hunter Park and Wonderwood Park and the rack. But to get into what specific, like, the LED field lights convergent, like, no one cares about the LED.
This is just for us.
I, I, well, no, we're, we're trying to figure out, what, the messaging.
This is, this is, this is helping, this is promoting all the conversation and, and we're putting everything in here, we're gonna condense it down, but we gotta get some perspective too.
Yeah, we should.
It'll be brilliant when it comes out.
Just still make sure it's still fine.
Yeah, we just wanted to share, yeah, kind of what we're thinking as far as those themes and. We get the conversation started on that, um, so are we ready for Dave?
So was there this direction that the city managers looking for before, and it's me?
Cause we wanna just kind of close with, with Dave's piece and, uh. Um, you know, go back to maybe the levy with all this conversation and kind of see where things are and. As, as something that the council as a whole is, is, um, ready to kind of give direction or not, or to use some more time. And more time mean come back to the next work session, so.
I just, again, I'd like, I just wanna hear example of. If we, if we say, we say, do we have to say forty five cents? And then the dollar amount or what, what makes, it's the forty five cent.
It's, it's the.
So we have no idea with that forty five cents at the end, is actually gonna.
We were telling them that and then once it's, once it's voted upon and it's validated and then that next actual, it'll be, that will be up to levy now.
So then how'd you come up with the five, how'd you come up with what that is right now?
That's today's sort of two thousand twenty four assessment value of thirteen point two billion, so, yeah, it's completely an estimate. The only thing that is guaranteed is the rate. So whatever you do, whether it be a graduated rate, you can name the rate, whatever council may choose, twenty five, thirty, thirty five, that will be set in stone. If you do forty five cents just going forward, that will be set in stone, but it will also be year one. In that case, where you don't have a graduated rate, everything else is variable. What happens to assessed valuation is going to be key in determining how much money will actually be generated. So if property values drop this year, that means that five point nine goes down.
Yeah, obviously.
Um, if it goes up, that five point, it's gonna be higher than five point nine, so.
So it sets the original forty five cents on year one and from that point on, it's totally.
The board will have discretion in setting the levy value, the total that you're after. And that rate will be calculated every January by the county, just like our regular property taxes.
Property taxes, and so and over the, and we seen that rate go down, 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 you know, because we've had. Gone, values gone up and whereas we do add annexations that will also push that down.
Not necessarily after year one, year one.
Every year one.
Is exempt, right, and then it will go down every time.
Well, twelve months. Not sure we're saying the same thing, but the, this annexation is treated, can be treated just like new construction. So if the governing body accepts new construction or annexation, it doesn't really move the rate that much. You basically incorporate them into the base and they pay the current rate. You don't have to accept that credit. But when you accept the credit, the, the rate basically stays flat. If you choose not to accept that valuation credit, then the rate will go down. But typically, it's what, it's what the city has done is accepted both.
Yeah.
And kept the rate steady. You don't have to do that, but again, that's where it's discretion of the governing board.
Cause isn't that where you got in trouble in the past is you add that all assessed value. But it was capped at the beginning based on that, whatever that rate was and so you couldn't get to that, they couldn't get to that number.
Well, I think partially, so if you do, wherever the ending rate is, whether you do a graduating rate or five years, that. Terminal rate, we'll call it, say it's forty five cents, or if you start with forty five cents, that becomes the ceiling. So you can never go above the highest authorized levy rate granted by the voters, so.
Whatever dollar amount that it produces.
That's correct, so if evaluation completely tanks. Uh, that ceiling will be forty five cents, so even if the calculation by the county ends up being, say, seventy five cents. They're always going to look back to that authorized amount of forty five cents and that will always be brought down, which means the overall amount collected is going to come down by that amount. And that's, I think that's part of what happened to Tumwater because we did have property values. Drop, drop in two thousand twenty three. After twelve years of continuous increase, we had that one little blip and I, I think that was part of the reason. There's also other factors with other rates, there's a lot of different things that.
Taxing district, tiers.
Limits that rate, but, yeah, it's, I know it's not comfortable in your position not having a guaranteed dollar amount, but. One way of looking at this too is if you add the forty five cents and just no graduated rate, that sets. That's almost a guarantee, it's not going to go down unless valuation really drops.
One thing's guaranteed, it's more money than we're getting today.
Well, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the.
The balance is trying to make sure you have enough funding to deliver on all these promises or things you want to do, so. If in, in the event that we don't collect that amount, something from this list gets delayed or completely cut out, so.
And if we collect more, which can happen as well as values.
Do these nice things faster.
Can also move things faster, yeah.
I'm very capable with forty five cents.
Okay.
Everybody?
I could go either way, you know, so I, I just said I, I would do that too. Okay.
Do you need, make it a formal motion?
No, it'll come before.
So, so, so the actual final decision will be, be there when you start to act on the resolution, which would be earliest is April first. And so that's, that's when you take the actual formal action, but this gives us direction to start working towards preparing that, knowing that council can also.
So, I'm.
Readdress this.
I am interested in what we do, what's a recommendation on the supplant language. Cause I, I do think it's important that we let the public know that we're not going to supplant, but. I don't wanna get so prescriptive that we somehow.
It's, it's important message because we don't want people thinking that we're gonna also just use this to do what are our current things, we're not gonna add additional value. And that's important, so we'll.
That's what worries me about coming with on this list.
Yeah, sit down and, and talk about that and bring back kind of a, a better, better informed picture.
I think it's an important message to, like I was saying before, to message parks or a way to stretch your dollar, especially with, with your family, you know.
And I think, and I think though also, and of, of course, it's always in the moment, right? But we have a pretty good track record of investing, continuing that investment too, so it is important language, but also I wanna say it's not because there's been problems in the past. This is because we're, we're been, parks has been a, a, a very key piece or a flagship for the city lacing our quality of life. That people can do things in this community.
The other thing that, um, I think is important is, say the community comes together next year and says, hey. We really want to do a project that they're really excited about, right, that. Um, I think we should be able to, it'd be nice if there was something out there that sort of kept, captured the ongoing. Port of our, our community, because this is a, this is a snapshot of basically what we're thinking right now. Um, but, I mean, five years ago, six years ago, wherever it was, pickleball wasn't. Hey, right? But it just, but now it's skyrocketed in importance and now like people are, be all in because I'm gonna get more pickleball courts. Well, I think we'd need to, it'd be nice if there was something, a, a process where the, the community got together that was really interested in doing something. Like, that would be taken into consideration for future.
You keep seeking, you keep seeking.
Yeah, public input.
I think that's, that's the, the continual thing that we do is, is all we're finding, they're always renewed, they're always refreshed and they're always taking public input and incorporating those processes. They're updated every seven or ten years.
Um, it's a six year, it's a stay eligible for.
Yeah, and so we're always in that process, so right now we have this CPIP based on a current result, but in, in time, that will be updated and refreshed.
We have performance in there on cricket.
Well, again, I think it's a part of the communication strategy that we will listen to the public as needs arise or whatever, you know. I think it's just good policy to say that, of course, we're gonna be open to the public's.
And that's where you rely on your budget boards, the parks board, to also take away of all those community conversations, so like you mentioned that, that there's been. Uh, interest in cricket and that's gone before the parks board and they've worked at that issue as well and they're, they're listening to that engagement.
We also have an enhancements policy and program, so if there's a community group that has something that they wanna do, like a project or donation. Then we have, we do have a program for that and those are, applications are reviewed twice a year, it's been pretty good.
I mean, it's, it's been a while, it's like, I can't remember the last time I saw the Wantress Park master plan. I mean, it's been a while, I mean, there's, and I know we have actually, um, a lot of our undeveloped stuff, we have some sort of an idea of what. We thought we were gonna do, but that's just so much for, like, unless you're always talking about all the time, it's, it's tough for the public to even be excited about any of that stuff. Cause they don't even know it exists and so, I mean, we haven't talked about the Wantress Park in, what, ten years? I mean, it's been, it's been a long time.
Yeah, it was before I got here.
Yeah, well, there you go.
But it, that just shows you how many needs there are, I mean, it, it's just, we have such a big park system and. There's a lot of needs.
One of the things that we, that we've talked about for a long time is, uh, we have undeveloped park property. We did such a good job of, of putting money away every year to invest in buying new park property. And we did that for years and years and years and years and now we got all this park property and now we, at this phase there, we want to develop that park property. But some of this takes going out, okay, what park property do we buy, what's undeveloped and, you know, that's, I think. Part of that communication plans is that we have undeveloped parks in, you know, around you and this is what, these are the things that we can.
Definitely want access for folks.
Yeah, access for folks, I mean, I really think that's, that's important because it's crazy that we have undeveloped property just sitting there that's not being used. And it should be.
Like we bought it and now you have to have the money to.
To, to now.
You need this money.
That is one of the themes.
That was some of the feedback we received too, right, Jen, that's, you've told that quite a few times, is people don't want to acquire more property, they want to develop the properties we have.
Let's, let's develop the, let's develop the properties that we haven't developed yet. And there's quite a few on it, I mean, there's a lot of property out there that we, it's just standing there and we haven't developed.
So we can cast, we can cast that vision, right?
I mean, it can almost be like the parks you've never heard of, it could be, you know, and just kind of bring it.
Well, I remember, you know, I remember, I, I, I remember going through a lot of that stuff, uh, and it's been a long time ago and being really excited and. Wow, we have, we have this property and this is what, this is what it could look like and it just, we haven't been able to develop any of them because we haven't had the resources to do it.
In the summer when people are at the barbecue fest or doing, you know, the hundred events that are gonna be going on, say, do you like this, do you want more of this, this?
And that's where I think if we can have, I'm, I'm going with communication size. Yeah. Okay, yeah.
I'm gonna, you know, I love the, the buildup, but I have like a minute. No, so what's important for council to be reminded of, and every council member is aware of this, that, I mean, the public's fully commissioned, I mean. You've all run for office, so you've, you've done some research on your own, but, um, you know, gonna plant some seeds now, we're gonna.
gonna plant some seeds now, we're gonna continue discussing this over the next several weeks, probably every time we have this conversation, building up to when the ballot, um, measure, when the resolution is passed, and when, you know, campaigning and whatnot, or the ballot proposition got to, got to vote. So I just wanna reinforce, um, the revised Code of Washington forty-two seventeen A that indicates that public facilities cannot be used to assist in not only, um, election campaigns, but in support of or against ballot propositions. And it's, it's as simple as that. We all know this, but it is really in the details, and that means utilizing public facilities at all. That can be, um, that can be, you know, not only the office space, not just, you know, being at City Hall, having a, a staff member prepare some materials, you know, for or against or something of the sort. That's utilizing, you know, your iPad to send emails on your own time. That's a city-issued iPad. That's utilizing paper that you got from the city to, you know, write a letter. I mean, that's, that's any public facility, yeah.
So parks are public facilities. Does that mean we can't campaign for parks funding on parks properties? So if we're in a park during a city event, we can be providing information?
You could be in, that's, that's a really interesting question. I haven't considered that. I will follow up. I will follow up with you, but, um, I, I would be very surprised if, if being on park property would be considered a use of public facilities for that purpose, but I'll, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna follow up with you. Um, I mean, you can be in Lacey on your own time, doing your own thing, utilizing your own resources, um, you know, advocating for or against a developed proposition. You know, utilize, and with staff, it's like utilizing staff time, and you, you could be at home on your own time, but call Jen, you call the city manager and start asking questions and utilizing their time for your, I mean, that can all be problematic. So it's just very, very important when it comes down to, um, u- utilizing any resources, anybody's time, that you're doing it on your own private, personal time. And that's pretty much all I wanted to kinda remind everybody about today. Please follow up with the city manager or myself, um, with specific follow-up questions, you know? And, and again, as we get closer to the, the communication strategy and whatnot, there's gonna be more information I'll be providing that's a little bit more pertinent to, you know, those sorts of issues. You know, we're gonna be preparing a for and against, um, you know, informational, or no, just an informational packet. A council may consider adopting a resolution for or against a proposition, and then, of course, anybody um, from the public needs to be offered an opportunity to provide an alternate view. You know, so there's a lot of little nuance here that we'll all kinda take a deep dive in as we get through this process, but just, just reminding council to consider that and take it seriously. Um, penalties can be severe. Penalties can be up to ten thousand dollars. Um, they can lead into misdemeanor prosecution if it's with malice, you know? So I don't suppose that that would ever be a problem.
Well, the city manager of Olympia, the city manager of Olympia got fined.
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten grand because they were advocating for something rather than just giving out information.
And ultimately, it could ultimately void an election, and we certainly don't.
Can't afford that.
We don't want, we just really, really, really wanna be careful. And so if you have any concern about it, just give me a call, talk to the city manager about it.
As elected, though, in our own time.
Yeah.
And it is different than staff, I get. We do have, we can actually, on our own time, be pro or against publicly. We don't have to stick to just getting facts. We can advocate.
Utilize public facilities. That's right, and, and that's.
Andy and I did quite a bit when we did the, um, transfer benefit districts. We went out and did, you know, spoke to groups and things like that.
Just being very cautious and thinking through it, and we have a couple of, uh, community foundations. Uh, you know, there's the Lacey Community Foundation, there's the Park Foundation that might, um, lend support, and if any council member's gonna be communicating with them, I mean, making sure what hat you have on, what you're doing, just be careful, that's it, so.
And if these groups or individuals want information, direct them to contact, we'll get some contact information if that's on, but I don't, hopefully, direct them to contact me, and I'll get it to the right person for, for their information.
And, and we'll, we'll talk about this more. This'll be an ongoing conversation, so I just, that's it for now.
Okay. It's always, that's tricky, because obviously, on one hand, we wanna get a good communications out, but we can't, like, there's, there's this balance there, it was like.
Communication can be okay. It's what are you communicating? And advocate.
And so that's why we're taking our time and doing.
Providing information to the community is, is, would be malfeasance not to do it, considering what's at stake. I mean, you have to provide information and communicate. It's, it's how that's done, um, is, is what's really important.
And a lot of these ballot measures, groups are formed outside, nothing to do with the city or the, you know, the jurisdiction, that, you know, private, privately, groups are formed to advocate for and do that. You saw it with, um, when Keycom went out for money, there was, you know, a separate committee, had nothing to do with Keycom.
And organizing that committee can't use public facilities.
Sure.
So just.
We made it a real estate.
And, and as far, and as far as we're doing the built-in communication strategy, we're do, do it as informational. Here, here's the information about not saying vote yes or vote no, and that was the downfall of the example you used previously. They had a different language.
Right, and he, I think he wrote a ten thousand dollar personal check on that.
And.
Okay, well, I, I, so you're gonna come back to us somewhat soon on what the language, ballot language would look like, including the supplant language?
Yep, we will, uh, um, thank you for tonight. We'll continue to proceed down the path. We will, uh, start finalizing the communication strategy, and, um, and then we'll bring back some, um, ballot language, and, um, and kinda make some recommendations on how to, how to, um, look at the supplant language. And we could potentially do that at the twen, the work, next work session. Uh, we are targeting April first, that's just around the corner for action, so we wanna probably get that in front of council to look at before we go into an action setting, so.
So can we plan on, on, like, on the eight, eighteenth, or to talk about this tomorrow? I mean, that's on, I know that's only.
Eighteenth is the next council meeting?
It's the next council meeting.
Um, we could, we could look at that.
Do we have time where, because there's the twenty-fifth, which is fine, but then.
You're going right into the first.
The, the first, although we, we have the little fifteen, so we could, we could do something on, on some more time, but.
So we'll look.
Is that enough time?
Yeah, I'll look at, well, I'll, tomorrow, I'll look at what do we need for time. If we can get it on, um, sooner to keep the conversation going and fresh, we'll do so.
Dave, does that include using the city website to cast vision or render, show renderings of, of possibilities?
Yeah, that's informational.
Yeah, okay.
That, we're not trying to sell it, we're just, we're not.
Writing information about.
Hey, this is what Wantress Park Master Plan looked like ten years ago. This is what.
Yeah, all right. But hey, vote yes so that we can do this.
Yeah. It's a no-no.
That's what it is.
Okay, do you have enough correction?
I think so, and we'll work on the schedule and we'll get that out.
Oh, it is eight forty-four. We have reached the end of our agenda, so without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
And as you break apart, just reminder, we have Cuyo Park, Phase One, A, dedication, co-branding.